...like that is to look for some online remote work. It might not be quite as satisfying as being in person, but trust me, watching my kids sit around during the summer, it's better than nothing.
And it pays, that's for sure. Alicia Modestino, Research Director at the Dukakis Center for Urban and Regional Policy at Northeastern University. Alicia, thank you so much. And by the way, are your kids working or are they just sitting on the couch?
You know, the last one just got a job two weeks ago at Home Depot, working overnight. He wanted that $20 an hour premium for working overnight. So there's something for everyone out there.
All right, Alicia, thank you so much.
Thanks for having me.
And you're listening to Here and Now. Hey, it's Peter Sagal here, and if you're in your car, I want you to try something for me. If you're not in your car, go get in your car. Here we go. Roll up the windows, you're all sealed inside, take a good smell. Yeah, yeah, that was the time you found out what kombucha really smells like after you left a bottle open for a week. Well, you can lose that old car smell by donating your vehicle to one of your favorite causes like public radio. And just like that, you've supported this station and well, you are on your way to a life of better smells.
Go to our website, radioiq.org. Support for Radio IQ programming comes in part from Good Samaritan Advanced Illness Care and Hospice, celebrating 30 years of providing care to southwest Virginia. Find out more at goodsam.care.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from your NPR station, from BetterHelp, connecting people with a therapist online for issues like depression and anxiety. Twenty-five thousand therapists are available through BetterHelp using a computer or smartphone, betterhelp.com-public. And Indeed, Indeed is committed to helping businesses of any size attract, interview, and hire candidates all in one place. More at indeed.com/NPR.
It's Here and Now. The National Park Service wants to incorporate more contemporary Black history into its storytelling about America. It already has several historic sites across the deep south that recognize achievements and atrocities during the civil rights movement. And as NPR'S John Burnett reports, the service is exploring sites elsewhere, including a Black Panther Party National Historic Site.
On a spring day in Oakland, California, Frederica Newton, the widow of Black Panther co-founder Huey P. Newton, stands next to a bronze bust of her late husband. It's in a wide landscaped median in the part of town the Panthers called home.
The Black Panther Party is an American story, and that's the job of the National Park Service to tell the American story.
Once upon a time, former FBI Director J. Edgar Hoover called the Black Panthers "America's greatest internal threat." A half century later, as perspectives have mellowed, the Huey Newton statue could eventually be part of the National Historical Park. Other possible stops: the former Panther Party headquarters, the locations of the group's free medical clinics and free children's breakfast program, and the spot where Newton was murdered, all of it patrolled by a park ranger in a flat hat. The idea of the Black Panther Party National Historical Park still rankles some. In 2017, the Park Service had to cancel the idea after police groups complained to President Donald Trump that the nation was commemorating a violent separatist group.
It's one of the most misunderstood legacies of this party. It wasn't hate, it wasn't a nationalist organization, it was not a racist organization. Our mission was to fight oppression for all oppressed people.
But with the Democrat in the White House, the project is back under study.
I'm encouraged.
This is just one of the ideas the Park Service is pursuing as a way to diversify its storytelling about America. There are currently about forty sites in the park system referred to as African-American Experience Sites. They include the Birmingham Civil Rights National Monument in Alabama, the Selma to Montgomery National Historic Trail, and the Medgar and Merle Evers Home National Monument in Jackson, Mississippi. That's the house where the NAACP State Field Secretary was murdered in 1963. It may come as a surprise that the National Park Service, that gave us America's "best idea," the majestic landscapes of Yellowstone and the Grand Canyon, is highlighting chapters of history that some Americans are ashamed of.
And now's the time, we can quote Charlie Parker, now's the time to really begin addressing these stories and looking at them in a candid way.
Alan Spears is Senior Director for Cultural Resources at the National Parks Conservation Association, a nonprofit that advocates for the national park system.
I think there's a great deal of pain out there, and it's the pain that comes from having unresolved history that's been deliberately overlooked and neglected.
Even more African-American Experience Sites are on the drawing board. In addition to a possible Black Panther Park, NPS is studying sites that remember the 1964 murders of three civil rights workers, James Chaney, Andrew Goodman, and Michael Schwerner in Mississippi, and the 1955 lynching of Emmett Till, a 14-year-old Black youth accused of offending a white woman in Mississippi. Alan Spears, who's Black, says if these historic designations become a reality, they'll create opportunities for visitors to have conversations about race and white supremacy.
And sometimes that makes them controversial to some people, but I think critical to folks like myself who think that we gain much more than we lose by taking a direct look and a candid look at our history and our past.
Like he says, some of this history is unresolved. Case in point, the National Park Service erected a remembrance of the Freedom Riders beside the highway outside of Anniston, Alabama. It marks the spot where in 1961, white segregationists firebombed a bus that was carrying the interracial Freedom Riders through the deep south to protest segregated bus station waiting rooms. Earlier this year, a car rammed the NPS sign and sprayed mud all over it. Yet there's more reconciliation than resentment these days. Charles Person, now 78, was one of the original Freedom Riders. He urged the Park Service to commemorate their ride. He remembers a trip he took back to Anniston and how the town is now promoting the Freedom Riders National Monument.
When we came, a gentleman showed up, and he was grandson of one of the Klansmen. And he apologized for the beating that they gave, you know, for setting their bus on fire. And we sat there and we were so amazed at the things that the town was trying to do.
One of the first civil rights sites in the NPS network was the Martin Luther King Jr. National Historical Park, established in 1980. It's grown into a major tourist attraction in Atlanta. Visitors can see his birth home, his church, the sprawling visitor center, and the World Peace Rose Garden. But this is not just a place to learn about the life and times of MLK. For the people of Atlanta, the King Park continues to connect them to the spirit of nonviolence and the struggle for racial justice.
When Mandela passed away, people came here. When Congressman John Lewis passed away, people came here.
Marty Smith is Chief of Interpretation Education at the King Historical Park.
George Floyd, people came here. So that just shows you how powerful this site is.
The night that Barack Obama was elected 44th president, Smith says he walked out onto the grounds and found hundreds of people.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call Roanoke City Council regular session July 18, 2 p.m. to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCoy, to please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes, Mayor Lee and Mr. Best Pitch will be out for both sessions, and a quorum is present. I am going to ask Ms. Reverend Elizabeth Link, pastor of Second Presbyterian Church, to come forward and lead us in the invocation, and I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Link?
Let us join our hearts in prayer. Holy One, we gather today yearning to be and do what is right and what is good. We come as ordinary people, seeking to find the way, trusting that you will illumine our hearts and minds. We pray, Lord, that you would shine your light and look with favor upon our city. Guide our city council members, sustain them in their work, support them in their anxieties, and strengthen them in their resolve to seek and pursue the well-being of all people. Grant them your wisdom, bless their business and work together with patience, compassion, and understanding, and grant to them the strength to discern and carry forth your will. May you instruct us in our daily walk, Lord, to bless this place, Roanoke, we call home. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone. Thank you so much, Reverend Link. Well, welcome, everybody. You could have been in a lot of places on this beautiful July afternoon, but you chose to be with Roanoke City Council. Thank you for joining us. We have a couple briefings this afternoon, but before that, I want to give you notice that council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 p.m. and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. Moving on to announcements, the Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or expirations of terms of office. The Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals, we have one vacancy. City of Roanoke Finance Board, one vacancy, which is a citizen-at-large. Roanoke Arts Commission, we have three vacancies. Roanoke Public Library Board, one vacancy. And you can access any of these applications through the city's homepage at the above or, you know, if you're looking for any of the above-mentioned vacancies. And there are a lot of them, so hopefully those of you listening might do an application. Come on, join us on one of these boards. Moving on to number two, there's a proclamation declaring July 11 through 15/22 as summer learning week, and I am going to ask the representative from the library or anybody who's with the library to join me at the podium to do this proclamation. Are y'all shy? Welcome, welcome. So this is quite a privilege. I know Mayor Lee is sorry that he won't be here, she wants to do this, but I'm excited to do it. And it starts like this. Whereas, summer learning week is a time to reflect on the importance of keeping young people learning safe and healthy every summer, ensuring they return to school in the fall and ready to succeed in the year ahead. Whereas, there is still a role for summer youth employment programs to engage our older youth. Whether virtual or in-person, with the support of business and community leaders, our youth can learn, gain real-world experience, contribute to their community and economy, and experience safer environments through summer job, internships, mentoring, and/or volunteer opportunities. Whereas, the Wallace Foundation's largest-ever summer learning study, conducted by the Rand Corporation, found that it was clear that low-income students experienced more setbacks over the summer compared to their wealthier peers. Whereas, summer learning programs are proven to maintain and advance students' academic and social-emotional growth, keep children safe and healthy during the summer, and send young people back to school ready to learn. Whereas, a wide array of public agencies, community-based organizations, schools, libraries, museums, recreation centers, camps, and businesses in our community contribute to the well-being of the youth through summer programming. And whereas, joyful summer learning experiences are a critical component of our collective effort to ensure America's educational recovery and that all students heal, grow, and thrive through and beyond this global pandemic. Now, therefore, I, Vice Mayor Patricia White Boyd, on behalf of Sherman P. Lee Sr., Mayor of the City of Roanoke, do commend this observance to all citizens and do hereby proclaim July 1st through the 15th, 2022, as Summer Learning Week. That's a lot. Would you like to say something, Ms. Turner?
Briefly.
Yes, absolutely.
Sure. So first off, I'd say thank you to everybody for bringing this to everyone's attention because it's so important. And I would say we're in the midst of our summer reading program right now at the libraries, and the theme this year is opportunities, you know, oceans of opportunity. And I think that that's what we're seeing is a very good response from the community for our programs, and we're offering over 400 programs in June and July. So again, we really appreciate it. I also have Amber Lowry and Charles C. Parker, who are very, very busy right now and have been planning this since the winter. So again, we really appreciate it, and I think it's more important now than ever because it's not just the summer slide, it's unfortunately the COVID slide that we're looking at, and our goal is to make sure every child is reading and doing well in school when they return back to school in the fall.
Thank you, thank you, all three of you, for all that you're doing. We appreciate you guys, and we give them a hand. Everybody else is having fun, you guys are working. Moving on, on our agenda, we have Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody?
Yes, we do. We have three citizens signed up, and the first is Irene Malakowski.
Irene? You want to come forward?
Irene Malakowski, 2208 Jefferson Street, Roanoke. I'm accompanied by my husband and neighbors of South Roanoke. Good afternoon, Madam Vice Mayor and council members. I'm here today to request the city be proactive and consider additional measures to enhance the safety and walkability of our neighborhood. We are in the midst of some exciting changes with the expansion of Carillion Medical Facilities and the proposed boutique hotel and restaurants. And one common concern residents have are these projects may jeopardize the safe walkability of our neighborhoods. Upon the completion of Carillion's project, we will have a combined parking capacity of 1,000 vehicles between three garages located on Jefferson, McClanahan, and Crystal Spring Avenue. Carillion understood the need for pedestrian safety and proposed a suspended walkable bridge, widening of Jefferson Street, and construction of a concrete aisle on Jefferson to provide pedestrian refuge. That was their words. And although the scope of this project is being reconfigured, the end project will significantly increase both vehicular and pedestrian traffic for years to come. The hotel considered the impact of Carillion's expansion when planning their project and anticipates residents of South Roanoke, nearby businesses, and hospital employees will also want to walk to their facility. They negotiated with Carillion to use the Fairfax Garage for both its patrons and valet services. These patrons will also need to cross Jefferson Street. Some actionable steps the city can take is to expand their initial great-street-village vision to include additional crosswalks on collector streets such as Jefferson, Avonham, McClanahan, and Broadway, with the local numbered streets and streets like Richelieu, Crystal Spring, Wycliffe, Carolina, and Roslin, and to continue their ongoing walkway expansion project. Wycliffe, Carolina, and Roslin were noted in Carillion's traffic study to be cut-through streets and considered mitigators of hospital traffic. So these cars will be coming through our neighborhood probably very quickly. Also, the placement of additional traffic signs such as the freestanding "stop, it's the law" signs to remind drivers that stopping for pedestrians is not just a courtesy, it's the law. Fork in the Alley no longer has an agreement with Carillion for its patrons to utilize Crystal Spring parking garage. So cars illegally park in our church parking lot, and the overflow cars are all along residential streets, which further reduce the visibility of both vehicle drivers and pedestrians. A walkable city is a major asset to any city and has far-reaching benefits for everyone. We must not overlook the impact these projects have on our neighborhood, and I respectfully request the city consider crosswalks, safety traffic signs, and the sidewalk enhancement project as just some of the measures to enhance the safety and walkability of our neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Malakowski.
Our next speaker is Barbara Durk.
Dear Vice Mayor, Members of Council and Administration, I am Barbara Norris Durk. I live at 2607 Rosland Avenue. I have not lived in the city all my life. I am not from here, but I've been here since 1956. Do you still have your key to the city that I gave you? Oh, I hope that you are using this. And I recently sent you an invitation that I would buy your ticket on Amtrak to Alexandria if you would just go there for a day or for a visit. Perhaps that that is the multimodal transportation city council and the city management is trying to replicate in Roanoke because the city code, Section 36217, says no parking is required for residents and businesses anywhere in any zone. And neighbors in South Roanoke, in our South Roanoke Village, Bill L. LLC is petitioning the BCA for properties 2221 and 2223, Crystal Spring Avenue, to be repurposed for approximately 24 hotels room and a restaurant that can accommodate 190 people. If that is two people per car, that's still 95 cars that will be parked in the neighborhood. I know you've been to my neighborhood before. I've seen you at Fork in the Alley in the 2100 block of Crystal Spring. Where did you park when you came to my neighborhood? The Evangelical Presbyterian Church parking lot across the street from Fork in the Alley says no parking. Where are people supposed to park when they visit South Roanoke Village? Well, Mr. Burris, who's spoken to you before, proposed diagonal parking in front of his businesses, which are now called River and Rail and the Crystal Spring Deli. And the city put in diagonal parking, which added a few more parking spots. We've had some trees that have come down in the 2100 block of Crystal Spring, that's where Fork in the Alley is. And perhaps you can take that utility strip from the curb to the sidewalk, put in some diagonal parking right in there to add more parking spots for Fork in the Alley. Because it's not required for the developers to add the parking anymore, I am expecting the city to pick up the responsibility for adding that infrastructure. Some things that the neighbors are also concerned is there's property on 21st Street, across the street from 7-Eleven that's for sale, that right now people are parking on street there, that it's a tight squeeze in the alley between 22nd and 21st Street, and with the development of this property, that's going to be even tighter, that I ask that the alley be kept accessible for trash and recycle pickup, if a restaurant and a hotel are allowed on this property. I also would like to have the alley designated as a South Roanoke connector to the Roanoke River Greenway. Add no parking signs on the housing side of Richelieu. Add no parking signs on Crystal Spring. With the closing of the Roanoke and Famous Anthony's, the neighbors did ask when we met with the petitioner May the 24th for a breakfast menu at the restaurant, and he added that to the BCA application in July. Walking infrastructure is required as part of Section 36218. The grid system in South Roanoke needs to be completed. You need to add bicycling accommodations on the major arterials and connector streets. It was around 2008 when the requirement for parking for businesses and restaurants in commercial zones was removed. You can make a difference with your key. Change the culture of Roanoke to healthy. Live, work, and play where you can go without a motor vehicle. Ask the city to work with this upscale boutique hotel, restaurant, and the neighbors in South Roanoke, the neighborhood organization, to see if this can fit into the neighborhood and address the parking that is needed to run an efficient business, but not impose upon the neighbors in the neighborhood. City should support no parking.
Thank you, Ms. Durk, and also Ms. Malakowski. If you have one more?
One other speaker, excuse me. Thomas Butler.
Hello, council. Thank you for letting me speak today in front of you. My name is Thomas Butler. I live in the Fairfax Condos, which is part of the area where they want to park a lot of extra cars, overflow cars for the hotel boutique project. And that being said, I do a lot of walking in the neighborhood, and I would invite all of you guys, if you haven't before, just to walk by this particular piece of property and look at it and see how small it is. It's only, well, it tells how much square foot and how many linear feet there is on the sidewalk, but it just seems to me like it's just a great idea to have this boutique hotel and restaurant in town. I think it's good for the town, it's good for the neighborhood. However, to cram it into this small space on Crystal Spring Avenue looks difficult. If you walk by the place, you would not believe, after seeing the plans on what they want to build, what it would look like. It just doesn't seem to fit. So, you know, the extra traffic, foot traffic, pedestrians, as well as car traffic, everything from delivery vehicles, service vehicles, ride-sharing, taxis, you name it, is just going to create more havoc in the neighborhood that's not used to this kind of thing, and it's too small to handle it at this point. So it's just my opinion that if they could find a bigger property, or maybe they could buy the post office right next door to their property, they've had plenty of room to put this in. That'd be a great idea, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. You said we had three. Ms. Durk and Ms. Malakowski and Mr. Butler, I will just let you know, if deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to the council. And thank you for coming down. Moving on to item number four, the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda.
Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, I will. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item number five, public hearings. There are none. Item number six, petitions and communications, none. Number seven, reports of the city officers and comments of the city manager. And I think we will move forward for our briefings. The first one is our annual public safety. Did you want to bring the chief forward?
Yeah, we have, there'll be two briefings today. The first, as you indicated, is the annual public safety update. Of course, last meeting, we did the police department's update and today is the fire EMS annual update. And Chief Hoback is going to walk us through this and then our next briefing after that will be the smart scale.
Smart scale, okay. Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon. How are y'all doing today?
Doing well.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy and members of council, thank you so much for allowing me to speak a few minutes about the 2021 performance of the Roanoke Fire EMS Department. Before I get started, I'd kind of like to introduce my staff. I have Deputy Chief David Gwynne, who is over community risk reduction. I have my battalion chief over EMS health and safety, Andy Foley. I have my battalion chief over emergency management, Trevor Shannon. And I have a captain who is actually acting fire marshal, Bobby Russell, with me. And then I have a community risk reduction specialist, Rachel Hale. This is her first briefing. She came onboard with us from the city school system in January. She's relatively new to the system, to our department, so we were very fortunate to get her.
Thank you.
So before we get started, I have just a quick video to show you. It's kind of to capture the stuff that we've been doing this year and kind of get, it gets you a little excited about what I'm going to present. Now, the Roanoke Fire EMS Department in the city of Roanoke, we have 11 stations to provide services to our community. Within those 11 stations, we have 10 engine companies, four ladder trucks, nine full-time ambulances, two peak demand ambulances, two advanced care paramedic units, one on the north, one on the south, and then two battalion chiefs, one on the, one on the north and one on the south. With that, we have to maintain a staffing profile of about 64 people to ensure that all those trucks are staffed and ready, response ready, and to be able to provide service to our community. The specialty teams, which y'all so graciously acknowledged, one of them, a couple of weeks ago, the Swift Water team and the Hashmat team and the HTR team are made up of those 64 people. We have people that are trained throughout our, our stations and when we have a response, we bring them together and they make the response. Most recently, we went up to help our, our community up in Buchanan County with the devastating floods. We went up there with Roanoke County, City of Salem, Bedford, Lynchburg, all deployed up there to try to help that community recover and actually look for people. There were initially, it was 144 people missing. It turned out thankfully, nobody, nobody was killed and everybody was covered, accounted for. But those specialty teams come from the 64 staffing that we have every day. From a community engagement perspective is really what Rachel is and the, and Dave Gwynne's group is all about, is engaging the community. Four really high profile events that we do every year are guns and hoses, the hockey and the, and the softball. I will tell you, I kind of missed the police department's presentation last week. It'd have been really good, even though they did win hockey. You know, we were looking forward to our softball tournament, which was actually delayed because of weather, which will be in August. So I always like giving Sam a hard time about our little competitiveness as it relates to police and fire. National Night Out we have coming up. We partner with the police department. It's very strong fire presence at all those events that are out there. Read Across America, we get out, reengage with all the elementary schools and read Dr. Seuss to the kids. And it's one of the highlights, at least for me, of my career to get out and read. And then we have the 9/11 stair climbs coming up. It was because of COVID moved to the Salem Red Sox Field, but it is now coming back to the city of Roanoke and will be downtown. And the Wells Fargo bill has agreed to host that again this year. So that's going to be a huge event downtown. Community risk reduction, we still have a very strong smoke detector program. Somebody asked me, do we really still have people within our community that don't have smoke detectors? Absolutely, we do. We most recently had a fire a couple of days ago last week and there were no smoke detectors when, when the fire on the first floor. So we do viral, virtual as well as in-person education. We do community walks. The Fire Marshal's Office accompanies to go out and we have an issue or a concern within a community, we'll go out and canvass that community and give out smoke detectors and public education flyers to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep them safe. And then we have support other community events such as community events as far as gatherings and things of that nature, we'll try to be there as much as we can. From a performance appraisal from the city of Roanoke, I will tell you, this year has been the busiest year this department has ever experienced in its history. Over 30,000 calls, 30,573 emergency calls we answered last year alone. Of that, we had a 4.3% increase and 4.3% increase in just the EMS calls, about a little over 1,000 EMS call increase and then about 300 calls for the fireside up. So we had a very busy year. From a fire perspective, we look at fires when we respond, our, our benchmark is to get an engine from the time it departs out the door to the time it's front of the house that is on fire in four minutes or less. And we did that this year 96.8% of the time. So 96, I think we only missed it by one call that we did not make that 90th percentile, I mean, that, that four minute window. And consequently, when we have what's called an effective response board, when we have a structured fire, not just one engine goes, we have three engines, two ladders, both battalions, and EMS operations, or advanced care paramedic and a paramedic unit go, they have to get there in 10 minutes or less. And we made that 92% of the time. So we're meeting our accreditation benchmarks as it relates to that on the fireside and we're doing very well. From a significant fire perspective, we try to keep our fires, we'd like to keep them down to zero. We know that's not going to be possible in any community, but we try to keep them below 70. This year, our significant fires were down at 62. Calls of fires, most of our fires were accidental. 27 were considered incendiary. We had 26 fires that we couldn't determine the origin because of the amount of damage that was occurred. And we still have three that are pending some lab results and things of that is in 2021. From an arson perspective that we talked about incendiary, we had 27 arson fires in the city. And I want to kind of clarify that, they're not all building fires. About 50% of our arson fires are property, whether it's vehicles or motorcycles or outbuildings or something like that. But then the other 50% are dwellings and house dwellings. And we recently had one at the Days Inn, which y'all may be familiar with, where we made a, police department made an arrest where somebody walked in and set, set the room on fire. So we still have that activity within our community, but it's staying pretty steady, right around 25 to 27. Fire loss is staying between, you know, three and $4 million. That's average for our community. We had a real big dip in 19, 2019, but it's starting to get back up a little bit. Last year, we had the Big South Summit Fire over off 220. That drove some of that numbers up a little bit because that was a significant fire loss for us. The Fire Marshal's Office this year has some transition. Y'all voted in the 2022 budget, budget session to actually change our Fire Marshal's Office predominantly part-time to all full-time. And with that transition, we had to realign some, some responsibilities and making sure that we're doing everything we can for our community. The goal of that was to make sure that we had consistency in giving our community, our business owners and our, and our residents, the information they needed when they have issues as it relates to fire code compliance. So now we have eight fire marshals full-time and we have three of which are law enforcement certified. And then we have one full-time administrative assistant. We've never had that before. We've only had three fire marshals in the past and all the rest of them have been part-time. And our troubles with that was we never could keep people and retain them once we certified them to do inspections. So thank you for what you did last year. It's making a world of difference. As you look at our numbers, our new inspections are about 1,100. That's all because of the transition. We try to benchmark about 3,000 new inspections a year. We fell behind on that mainly because of COVID and mainly because of the transition going from part-time to full-time. I will tell you now, we are benchmarked to make that 3,000 mark this year and looking at the numbers from January to June 30th. So we're very excited about that and knowing what we're doing to keep our community safe. So about 4,900 activities in the Fire Marshal's Office and that will only increase next year. As you look at EMS, and we talked about EMS and about the demand for service that we're experiencing, we benchmark our EMS delivery on three levels. One is a critical life support and that is when somebody is not breathing, somebody's in cardiac arrest, delivering a baby, has a critical trauma. And with that, we want to get onsite from the time we're out the door to in front of that or with that patient in five minutes or less 90% of the time. We fell below a little bit by that, by 1%. Some of the volume and demand is driving that decline a little bit because we did have quite a bit of calls, but we're still maintaining it. But 90%, I'm pretty happy with that, given the amount of calls that they answered in the 2021 year. The next level is advanced life support. That's people having a heart attack, they're conscious, they're having chest pain, difficulty breathing. We do heart alert, heart alerts where we'll do the 12 EDKGs, send it to the hospital. Sometimes we even bypass the ER and go straight to the cath lab. So we do a lot of good within our community, but the advanced life support calls, that's what, that's the heart of what we do every day. And we made that 90% of the time. We actually went up a little bit by about 0.1%. So that's not too bad, given the volume. And then the BLS, BLS is our basic life support, a relatively non-urgent or non-life threatening calls that we get. People who have fallen, broken their leg, broken their arm, who have, you know, had minor illnesses or injuries. We can see that trend where it's coming down from 97 to 93. I'm okay with that because what's happening is we're actually triaging those calls a little better and we may have a little bit longer delay, but we're providing better service and making sure we're right directing the calls. Because recently, we put in BLS trucks in our, in our system. We have two BLS trucks and we have seven ALS trucks. And with that, they're running bigger response areas. So that's where you're seeing that little bit decline. But these are the people who've been sick for days, that can wait for that 12 minutes for them to get there and it's important for, you know, us to make sure that we make that right call. So I'm not too concerned about that decline. If you look at our performance by priority, 8% of what we do out the door is intensely life-threatening situations, about 2,000 calls. And about 51% are those advanced life supports, difficulty breathing, chest pains, diabetic emergencies, seizures and stuff like that. And then about 10,000 or 41% of what we do are the basic life support. So it's a good blend and it's pretty much similar to what most communities are experiencing based on the numbers. I do, I do anticipate the BLS calls to go up and our ALS calls to go down and I'll talk about that in a little bit because we did change the way dispatchers type the calls. As you look for EMS demand, you can see our trend going up. I will tell you that, and, and I share this with my, my, my direct report, we are 9% above last year in the first six months of this year. We are 9% above trending where we were this time last year. So our EMS volume is on the increase. What's driving that, you know, there's a lot of things, but it really, what, what matters is we're about 9% of where we were last year. If you look at our demand call volume from 2020 to 2021, the first three months of 2021, high COVID. We had a lot of COVID in our community and people weren't going to the hospital, so we saw that dip like we did in 2020. It went down, but after that, everything's been up. All our demand for service is on a, on a gradual increase and overall, we were up 4.35%. I was asked where the volume increase is within our community. There's only two parts of our community that saw a decline in EMS responses and that is Southern Hills in South Roanoke and Dally Road. Everything else in our community saw an increase. The bigger increases were in southeast, Peters Creek and Melrose and Salem Turnpike and then the 460 East down near the county line in Bonsock, that area. That's where you see the biggest. We had a 40% increase over a five-year period for that area alone. So we are showing that as it relates to where the impact is within, within our community. I will say that our ambulances are placed accordingly for this, with the exception of the 460 East. Demand for service by time of day is pretty static. You know, EMS volume is really based on people's activities. The more active they are, the more calls we get. So as you have a really sunny day, it's real busy, like today. We've been very, very busy today. As the rain comes in, it starts to pluck off a little bit. It really is based on people's activity. So by 8 o'clock, people starting to go to work, get, you know, get involved in what they're doing in their daily lives and then after 8 o'clock, it starts to drop off again. Well, last year, we saw that trend of volume go up, so I asked my boss, Clarence Greer, could we put on another BLS unit? We really needed it because we weren't meeting, we weren't meeting our demand for service. So we put another BLS truck, power truck on from 12A, I mean, from 8A to 8P. And that BLS truck is really helping us meet the demand for service. And that truck pretty much runs the whole city and is staffed with part-time EMTs. So it's working out well for us. But that's during that 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM window. EMS transport, up a little bit. We're up about 4.8%. We transported 16,224 people last month, last year, about a 63% transport rate. You know, we look at transport rates based on acuity and 39% of the people we transported had a high acuity, needing urgent life-threatening care. The other 50% of what we transported were urgent care. They needed immediate ER care, but it wasn't life-threatening. They needed to be treated. And then about 10% of what we transported really didn't need to go to the hospital, really didn't need to go to the ED and probably could have found another way to get the care they needed, whether it was an urgent care or the primary care or something like that. So as you look at that, you know, it's pretty a telltale sign about what we do transport. We're doing a really good job. Only 10%, we're not triaging out, not to take to the hospital. All right, admission rates after we get them to the hospital is about 35%. So what they'll do is if they can't turn it around in the ER and send them home, the 35% will get admitted. Some of those people do pass away, so that, that's factored in that, in that number as well. I talked to you a little bit about how we're changing our performance indicators and this came about in June. This is a new program working with the 911 center. We have actually prioritized our calls into, into five criteria and we do echo through alpha. Echo is the most critical medical call we have to alpha, which is the most non-critical call that we have. And why we're doing that is so that we can better utilize our resources. And what you'll see is ambulances deploying out, the stations that run non-emergency. They won't run emergency to the alpha calls. If you have somebody that has got a routine illness that is not life-threatening, they go out every day running non-emergency. And what that does is makes us a safer community because the ambulance is not running emergency to the calls. And they may get there in, you know, 10 minutes, they may get there in 12 or 14 minutes, but the call is not that high of acuity, so that time difference is going to make a difference on them. So we're really making a difference there. Again, alpha, delta, charl, I mean, delta, I mean, echo, delta, Charlie, Bravo, and alpha is how our dispatchers are classifying the calls now. And it's working very well for us. Factors driving EMS, again, it's, it's community health, senior living, Richfield down on 220, down on 460 recently opened up. That's generating, you know, about 150, 200 calls a year for us. And that's only with about 75% occupancy. As phase two and phase three open with that, that'll drive some additional volume for us. The opiate crisis and mental health, obviously, we're still having quite a few overdoses within our community. Another thing, what wasn't here last year that is here today, and that is the private services are having a staffing shortage where they cannot staff all their ambulances, where they can do, quite Corillian, do their campus transfers. They're rolling over to us to go to one Riverside, to transfer a patient out of Riverside to the ED or to the helipad to the ED or whatever it may be. And the private services that normally handle the nursing homes, they're rolling them over to us because they don't have anybody available. So that's driving some of our volume up. EMS uses a gateway to accessing healthcare and then we do have some of our people that really grossly misuse our service. And if that's the case, we do put them on what's called a high utilizers list and Chief Foley follows that up. And we go to the point of being very aggressive with those individuals and they continue to call, we can charge them. So it's a situation where, you know, we have one individual that's called us 17 times in less than a month and it's a situation where he didn't need help any of those times. So we're working with that to try to make it, make it work. Department needs, our department needs are posted on our website. Our 2022 business plan has been adopted by Mr. Greer and it really takes us from the 2022 and it really takes us from the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-seven. Fiscal resources and apparatus are the number one. First thing on our list is to replace Fire Station Two located on Noble Avenue. And y'all agreed to let us start looking for land on that, and we're doing that very aggressively right now. And I think there's money in the CIP now to start, correct me if I'm wrong, to start the acquisition of land and start that process and moving that station out from behind the service center out onto the proper of Williamson Road. The second is the South Roanoke Station, Station Eight, which is not in the CIP yet, but needs to be relocated out of Crystal Springs where everything is scheduled to be built and put it out on McClanahan. And there's opportunities there to make that happen, but currently, that is not in the CIP. We need a new ladder. We need ambulances, and we need a hazmat truck. I will tell you, the reason I highlight this is that everybody's having issues with that. It used to be I could order an ambulance and get it in in six months. Now, it's twenty-four months delivery. A ladder truck is thirty months delivery. An engine is twenty-four months delivery. So, that's the lead time it takes, and that's how backed up they are with chassis and engines and stuff like that. It's not just us. It's across the nation and how business is done. Service equity, in part of our business plan, we are recommending that an ambulance be placed at Station Fourteen on Mecca. Mecca Street and the four-sixty corridor is difficult to get to because it's only two ways in. Either you go down four-sixty or you go through Vinton. And that recreates time delays for us to get in there. And we would really like to get an ambulance in there. And I can't do it now. If I had the staffing, I would say I'd like to have the money now. But, the way our staffing profile is now, it'd be July of next year before I could even consider bringing that ambulance up. And that's where, and that's what I like to shoot for. I will put it in the budget next year and see if that's something y'all will consider to do. But, it is something from a service equity perspective to have that community serviced with an ambulance. Recruitment and retention, we're eleven percent down in operations. That's the most we've ever been in the history. We're operating right now at a negative staffing profile, which means every day, we're operating with overtime to keep our trucks in service. We do have twenty-one people in recruit school, but they will not graduate until October. We started out with twenty-four. We're down to twenty-one. I will tell you, with this last hiring process, we had thirty-one openings. We can only fill twenty-four. The recruit school before that, which was regional, we had twenty-one openings and we can only fill eleven. So, like everybody else, our department's not immune to this hiring concern or deficit and to being able to attract good people to come to work. And it's a system, it's like throughout the whole city, it's like that everywhere. But, we are still having problems, and that's not something we've ever had problems for. Normally, we got four, five, six hundred applications. Now, hundred, hundred-and-fifty, and the matriculated out may be down to thirty-five, we consider. So, it is something that we're concerned about. Our diverse workforce has been impacted because of that. We've lost some of our diversity, and we really need to start gaining that back. It's not going to take, it's not going to be a year. It's not going to be two. It's going to be a five-year growth for us. We've really got to focus hard on that and make it, and make a very assertive effort to get that where it needs to be. Professional development, thirty-five percent of turnover since two thousand and eighteen. So, over fifty percent of our workforce has less than five years' experience on the job. So, we really got to start worrying about paramedic training. We're very low on paramedics right now. Officer development training, we got a plan for those people to move up and ride the seat of the engines and take command of fires and know the difference of fire behavior, so they keep our people safe. And then the last thing that's all part of our strategic plan is capacity for growth. We've got to do a better job in understanding not what's going on today, but what's going to happen in the next three to five years or ten years down the road, and then start looking at that methodically and, and work with the city manager's office and say, this is what we need, or this is what we can do better, so that we can provide services more equitably throughout our community, but also plan for the growth within our community. Because we all want our community to grow and be better and more prosperous. But, with that comes more volume or a different way of doing business. Again, recruitment and turnover and diversity, again, turnover last three years, nineteen to twenty, was eleven percent. Last three years, from nineteen to twenty-one, was sixteen percent. Again, diversity is a big concern of ours, big concern of mine. Work for Roanoke Fire EMS is a website that really we use to attract and educate people what we're all about, so they can go and prepare themselves if they want to be part of our team. The hiring process, we used to be part of a regional hiring process of Roanoke County, City Salem, and Bodata. We've had to pull out the last time. I'm not sure whether we'll do it this next time. It just really depends on our application numbers. We want to make sure that we're doing everything we can right and make sure that we get our numbers where it needs to be. But, this recruit school we have going on now is strictly a Roanoke City recruit school. I had to pull out, felt bad about it, but I had to pull out and just do our own recruit school. Now, the county in Salem and Bodata started a recruit school in July, but I could not wait that long because we were on a negative staffing profile. And with five or six people in overtime every day, I know that Paul Workman is going to come and ask me where all this money is being spent. So, the quicker I can get people on the street, the quicker I can reduce that overtime expenditures, and that's what we're trying to do. Plans for twenty-twenty-two, I will tell you, the implementation of phase two of the step plan, and we're not only grateful for the step two of the, I mean, the phase two of the step plan. We're very grateful for what you did in FY twenty-two as well as FY twenty-three to up compensation for our firefighters. So, we're very appreciative of that. The reaccreditation, we'll probably go through reaccreditation this fall. Because of my absence from the office, I was able to get an extension to do it this fall, and then we'll do our site visits sometime around October, November, and then probably go before the commission in March. Community risk reduction committee, I mean, excuse me, expansion, expand the fire training opportunities. Again, we have a younger department. We got to train more. We've got to keep these people sharp. We've got to make sure they're ready to respond. Our community risk reduction committee is something that Chief Wynn put together. So, we have a group of about, what, fifteen, fifteen folks within our workforce that go out and look and find problems within our community and how we can address them, reduce the call volume, reduce the risk, and how we can do things better. Because our job is not just to go out on calls. Our job is to mitigate and reduce the deployment on calls. If we don't get called, then that's a success. If we get a call, sometimes that's not a success. So, we want to make sure when we go out the door, we're going out the door, and we've done everything we should to prevent that. The twenty-twenty plan, we're about two years behind in calls of COVID. But, the list of things that we have going on there, all the stuff that we want to do, we want to expand the use of BLS trucks. We want to really work with our dependent care facilities to make sure they're making the right call and don't default to us every time they have a problem, and some of that is going on. Corillian has been a great partnership with us, and we have the OMD program going on. We have doctors riding in the field with us that really helps us make, do things and do things a little better, saying a lot better care. And then we got the succession planning for twenty-twenty-two. We really got to start focusing on recruitment and hiring. This year, normally, our paramedics are trained through the Radford University program, which used to be Jefferson College. They couldn't, they couldn't provide the training we needed this year, so we had to reach out to VCU. And we do a virtual class now, and we got eleven students in that. And the drawback to that is they have to travel to Richmond occasionally and do their clinicals, but not here. Now, Radford is going to start up one in the fall, but we only have three people in it, and we really need to have more than that. But, VCU partnership has worked out very well for us. It's a virtual class, so doing things a little differently. And then officer development of making sure that we prepare the future leaders of our organization. And then questions. Again, the organization is very proud of what they do day in and day out, and the men and women that come to work are really proud of what they do, and they're very appreciative of what y'all do and the support that y'all provide for them. But, again, I can, I answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. My colleagues.
Sanchez Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Holback, for that great presentation. My question to you is about Station Fourteen. How long will it take for the ambulance to be ordered? How long is that process for ordering an ambulance?
Two years. But, what I'm doing is we're getting ready, I have a team down in Florida now doing inspection on one of the ambulances that will come in. What we're planning on doing, if we are fortunate enough to get the staffing and the funding to put in, we'll put a reserve unit there. That's what we did. We put Medic thirteen in place. We put a reserve unit in and bring that up and then order that ambulance as soon as we can to get that in the queue. But, again, it, nobody's fault, but we're two years out from that. So, if I get this ambulance, then I'll ask my boss Clarence Greer to get, to retain one of the reserve ambulances and not get rid of it, and the one that's in the best shape, and that's what we'll use down there.
Okay. Because I was thinking, if you're going to wait until you have personnel and then have to purchase an ambulance, it's going to be three years on the road.
We just cut a purchase order for two ambulances, and then we're hoping to, if we get a grant, order another one in January, if we get that grant. So, if that comes to fruition, again, I feel pretty confident I'll have a reserve ambulance to keep it up and running. That's not going to be a problem. Put a new one down there, you're probably looking at a year and a half, two years.
Yeah, because that's an area of concern of mine.
Yes, which it is with us as well.
Yes.
As many calls as these ambulances run, and now because of chassis deliveries, they're two months behind.
Yeah.
It used to be six months. And again, that's what we're dealing with. And it's not just us. You talk to fleet, it's police cars, it's everything.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Price?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Holback. You know, it's always great to see you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions. You remind me of an adage. I don't know if I can repeat it correctly, but you seem to be doing a lot more with a lot less, especially, you know, as it applies to personnel. What you said about, you know, applications are down, you know, getting recruits, the whole recruitment program seems to be something that is really, really problematic. The EMS program within Roanoke City Schools, is that still in operation?
It is. We just graduated a group, and Ms. Sanchez Jones was there.
Oh, good.
We did onboard one of those students, but he is going to college and he'll work for us when he's on break. And hopefully, he'll come back to workforce when he finishes college.
Yeah.
So, we do have one onboard for that. We have teen internships that are coming onboard after I meet with their parents this week and will work for us, but they're only sixteen. They can't workforce until they're eighteen and graduate from high school. So, we have that program going on. We have two of them coming on this week, and because they're sixteen years of age, I have to meet with the parents, let them know basically what they're getting into.
Sure.
And so, we're meeting with them, and they're actually onboarded by the city HR, and they're getting paid. So, all I got to do is slide them in and put them to work.
Great. Well, that's good to hear, you know, continuing to grow our own, because that's certainly helpful if that's a succession plan.
Right. One's a Patrick Henry student, one's a Fleming student.
Good, great, great. The other thing, too, you mentioned about the recruitment school and the necessity that you felt to pull out in the
Regional school?
In the regional school. When did that occur? And could you explain that a little bit more?
Well, we, when we were doing a regional, we did a regional approach in the fall, and when we realized that we only got fifty percent of the applicant, we offered thirty-one positions and only eleven came to us. And we felt with that and knowing what kind of openings we were going to have forecasted through twenty-twenty-two, we said, okay, we got to pull out. Because, see, in the regional process, we share applications. My applications are the county's applications or Salem's, Salem's applications are mine and Roanoke County. So, we kind of share applications. And with that process, we were not seeing the applicants come to us as well as they had in the past. And I really needed to be just an independent, you apply for us, you work for us, you go through our CPAT, and we onboarded. And that, we were able to get twenty-four candidates onboarded. Now, we're down to twenty-three, twenty-one because of some people resigning, but we still have twenty-one people coming out of that recruit school. Now, we're getting ready to go. As a matter of fact, we're having a meeting as we speak about doing another regional school starting in January. I know we're going to do regional CPAT, but how we do that is going to be, I just really got to look at my numbers. You know, the last time I looked at the applications, they weren't where I wanted them to be. And if I'm going to go into a process, I want to make sure, because we potentially hire twenty more candidates in January, and I want to make sure I have enough to hire. And that's where I am.
And Chief, can I just piggyback on what Ms. Price said? So, your cost to, it would be the same no matter how many you got? Do y'all split it equally or the cost?
Well, the process of onboarding people, hiring, going through the thing, we share equally
Uh-huh, right.
With the county. So, the hiring process from the psychological to the written, to the CPAT, it's all shared amongst the jurisdictions.
Okay.
But, and then when they go to the recruit school, it's really, we pay whatever our percentage of candidates are. So, if we have fifty percent of the candidates, we share fifty percent of the cost of teaching, and that's how it works. In this case, we had to pull out. Now, we're sharing a hundred percent of the cost of teaching. But, again, it's equivalent to the twenty-four that we onboarded.
Okay. That makes more sense to me. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Ms. Price, you still have the floor again.
Well, I was just wondering, does this, from what you just explained, but I'm also curious as to the salary comparisons regionally. Are we competitive with, with our localities? And does that play into any of these concerns with recruitment and retention?
It can. We are close to competitiveness as it relates to within a thousand or some dollars. And, you know, we just got to look at things from a holistic perspective. You know, it does play a role. It does. Now, whether the county or Salem have a better package than we do, you know, that is what, you know, we have to look at each time we go into it.
Well, I'd certainly, you know, coming from education, understand that, you know, sometimes the grass can look greener in other localities. So, and I know that right now the talks are continuing as far as looking at the pay plan for our firefighters and for our police. So, I hope and pray that those communications continue. So, and thank you for all that you and all the guys do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Cal?
I will tell you another thing that is not the compensation, but the volume that we run. In some cases, it can be a detractor.
You've got a lot more factors.
And when you're running, and we're the busiest fire department this side of Richmond, and you can go someplace else and run a third of the volume or whatever, the workforce of today is a little different than it was yesterday.
Absolutely.
So, you know, you got to take that into consideration as well.
Well, like I said, thank you again, because you guys certainly are doing a lot more with a lot less.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Val?
Thank you, Chief. Y'all are amazing.
Thank you.
And especially with the increased demand this year. I can't say that that surprises me based on everything that's going on in the world, in our community. But, the fact that you all have been able to retain this response rate that you have at every level is extraordinary, and that's, that's a commendation to everybody who works in the department.
It's a passion that they have, and they haven't wavered it off.
I was wondering, you were talking about the accreditation process, which I guess is happening again this fall.
Yes, sir.
How often does that happen?
Every five years, and then each year, we have to submit an accreditation update. We have skipped this year. Last year was no problem. We got that done. Unfortunately, due to my absence from the office, they were scheduled to come in in May. I was out all, and I was able to work it out with my accreditation site manager to get it delayed, and they were agreeable with that. It's not something that harms us in any way. But, you know, the accreditation process really makes us look at ourselves internally. And everything we talk about today, everything we talk about in our business plan, everything we talk about for future operations is outlined in the accreditation document. And that's what we use as a tool to decide where we need to be as a fire EMS organization. So, this delay is not harming us in any way. Very supportive of that. And we will get everything submitted, and they'll be here sometime in the fall. Hope you get to meet them.
Is there a baseline that they look for in terms of a lot of the data you've shared with us today with service performance and service demand and response time?
They do, but the only thing they look at, if we fall behind, which we have, all they want to see is we have a plan to correct it. You know, if we're falling behind in ability to provide services and we're not making our calls, we need to put a plan in place that would ultimately go through city manager Cal to y'all and say, this is what we need to correct the problem. And that's all they look for is continuous improvement. Now, if we fall behind in our performances, that's okay, because we have in the past. But, we put fundamental mechanisms in place to correct it and get it back where we did. That's why we put Medic thirteen in place, because Medic thirteen causes to drop below that ninety percent. We were down to eighty-nine, eighty-eight, and we knew that was a capacity issue that we weren't able to meet. And that's why y'all funded Medic thirteen to put in play and pick up that area of Peters Creek where we weren't meeting performance standards. Same thing why I'm asking for the Medic fourteen, so that we can increase our performance standards down there. And that, because the more calls we have down there, that we're not meeting that eight-minute window, the more it goes against that ninety percent top. So, from accreditation perspective, it's not a win or lose situation. It's continuous improvement situation. They just want to see us trying to do things better every day.
Right, right. A couple of things. A couple of things, and I think it was back on page six, one of the early slides on the Fire Marshal Department. I'm glad to hear we were able to move forward with the full-time Fire Marshals, 'cause I know that's made a difference. There was a line on there called "consults." Can you talk a little bit about what some of the consults are that the Fire Marshal's Department might?
We get people who call us all the time, and we had one today in a food truck, who was putting a hood system in. And wanted to make sure it was the right hood system. And it was right for the truck that they were going in, what they were cooking. So that consult was taken by Captain Russell, and he addressed their issues. And normally, it's either Captain Russell, or Captain Smith, Becky Smith, or it's Ronnie Campbell, who is our, a person who reviews all of our plans. So if an architect has an issue as it relates, 'cause we have one going on now about a sprinkler system, a building that's gonna be renovated, and new businesses moving in. And so Mr. Campbell had to go and meet with the architects and say, no, this is what needs to go in here, this is what the rating is. And that's what consults are. So we do that every day. We meet with the business community, we meet with our citizens, and they give them, we give them guidance. 'Cause we'd rather do it on the front end than when they're ready to be inspected and it's wrong. So the consults, that's what it's all about.
Yeah, thank you. When you were talking about the number of fires this year, I think we saw an increase in that, if I remember?
Just a little bit.
Just a slight?
A slight increase.
Are you able to determine how many of those, what role, if any, smoke detectors played? In either an earlier alert that there was a fire going on, or realizing once you got into the fire that there weren't appropriate smoke detectors in the facility?
Definitely, if we don't have smoke detectors, you see a higher dollar loss. We did have a large dollar loss on the Summit Fire, but that was a lightning strike that took the roof out, so the smoke detectors wouldn't have gone off. There's a lot of factors. You know, some fires, smoke detectors are not in place where the fire starts. So, but definitely, if we have smoke detectors in place, we get notified quickly, your dollar loss is gonna be way down. We had a Fire Marshal Avenue where the second floor smoke detectors were working, alerted the people on the second floor. They called us, we had a couch fire on the first floor. Put it out, it did a lot of smoke damage, a lot of heat damage on the first floor, but didn't do much more than that.
Yeah. I may have shared this next story with you all last year, I can't remember, and I apologize if this is a repeat. But I think it's helpful to know, because Roanoke has a hundred and five nationalities, we have people that come from all over the world. And they come from different cultures and different environments, and some of the realities in our homes are not realities they're used to. And last year, there was a family, I can't remember which country they were from, they were new to Roanoke. Someone was doing a virtual reading program with them, and kept hearing a beeping in the background.
Smoke, yeah.
And asked, you probably know the story. They asked, what is that beeping? And they basically said, well, our house beeps. And they had no idea that there was, a battery needed to be replaced, and so the volunteer was able to talk them through that. But I think it's important for citizens to hear this, because we can't assume that everyone knows what that beeping is.
Correct.
Or the absence of any sound if there's not a smoke detector. So we appreciate the education you all do. The last question I wanna ask is, just has to do, and you alluded to this a couple of times, in demand for service calls. But what do you see as our increasing challenges in the city, in our community? Not only based on the calls you're responding to, but based on the conversations you're having with community engagement? What should we be aware of as a council, what should citizens be aware of, to really get tuned into as we face some of our difficult challenges?
Well, there's two things. First of all, if you look at our community, we are a community that really needs to become more healthier. And that is one of the main things in partnering with Corillia, and to make sure that we do everything we can to keep our community as healthy as possible. The other thing is, we are a medical community. So people moved to Roanoke, so they can be closed to healthcare services. And when they do that, they tend to need our services more, because they have ongoing health issues. So that drives some of our volume. The nursing homes do as well. But if you look, we only transported sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four patients to the hospital, but we had twenty-five thousand, four hundred and five calls. A lot of that is man downs, unnecessary responses, people who are in good intentions, cell phone callers. But we've gotta be a better, we've gotta find a better way to educate. And that's what Chief Wynn's committee is really focusing on, is how can we take that nine thousand calls and kind of reduce it a little bit? And not have them go out the door as much. And then really focus on the high utilizers, and what we can do to help them to get through and to get them off our high utilizers group. So the answer is not an easy answer, the answer is not a quick answer, it's gonna be a long-term fix. But we've gotta be more mindful of the fact that we have a community that's changing. And with that change, we need to think differently. And that's why this committee is in place, because we bring different minds together that are out there seeing all this, and then how do we make it better? And that's what the committee's charged with. So we welcome any input that we can. Well, you know, I know that there's other issues, initiatives going on within our community about community health, paramedicine, and things of that nature. You know, there's, you know, there's a lot of things going on in Corillia right now that can really benefit us greatly, and we work very closely with them. But with that, it'll bring more challenges to us about how they treat patients, not just in the hospitals, but there's initiative to treat them at home. And then we may be the primary care providers when that occurs. And that's not a bad thing. But, you know, we've gotta be mindful that the area of EMS is not static. The area of fire is not static. We have gotta be change agents with what's going on around us. And if we're not, then I'm failed as a chief. So I've gotta start looking outside the box and find out different ways of doing business.
So one last follow-up to that. How can citizens support you all?
Getting involved with, you know, as we start putting out these PSAs and really take them seriously. If they find problems with their own, communicate that to us. Let us know these issues are going on. You know, our Fire Marshal's Office went and did a community walk in an area that was prompted because of a phone call. And we found problems. And if we do, if we know those problems exist, we'll come face-to-face, we'll go out, we'll walk the community, we'll go to the houses. And we're not there to do anything but educate and fix the issues, and provide services, and help if we can. And if we can't, we'll, it's just like we had a situation two days ago, where one of our interns called in and said, this guy's been on the side of the road in his car for two days. And we're going, what? No, it's not possible. Absolutely not possible. Broken down, on 581, by himself for two days, nobody would help. And she, and I said, that ain't right. So I went out there, sure enough, guy'd been there for two days, broken down, and nobody would help.
Wow.
And we've gotta get involved. We got him taken care of. He hadn't anything to drink or eat, 'cause he was afraid to leave his car unattended, thinking somebody was gonna steal stuff out of his car, he was very fearful. But we know for a fact that he was there for two days. And we've gotta get involved. And, you know, reach out and think outside the box. In this case, fought outside the box, the dispatchers were wonderful, they called the VDOT service, road service crew. They agreed to go outside their territory, come and help this gentleman, got him on the road in thirty minutes. But that's all it took.
Yeah.
So you've gotta get involved. And that's what I encourage our community to do, is get involved.
Thank you, Chief.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Well, thank you, Ms. Price, ma'am. I know you're probably tired of talking.
No, ma'am.
Okay, good. I just had a few comments and maybe some questions. Most of the colleagues have asked them, and you may have to repeat a little bit from me. With regards to your department needs, when you talked about your recruitment, and you listed the diversity piece. I guess I'm just wondering, what are we doing to try to encourage the diversity piece? To get, you know, the young people, the black, the browns, to be, to think about going into a fire EMS?
Well, I will tell you, right now, our recruitment, and if you look at our applications, are very diverse. We're failing of getting from applications to testing. And, you know, that's our problem. We really got a good diverse, you know, based on what they're sending us from HR, we've got some good diverse backgrounds. You know, females, and African-American males, and African-American females. But they're not coming through to matriculate out to where I can see them sitting in front of me, and let's hire this person. They're not showing up for the physical abilities test, and we've gotta figure out why. And then last time we did this hiring process, we had somebody on the phone talking to them every day. You're gonna show up? Yes. Come and do a ride-along with us? Yes. And communicate with that. So we're reaching, we're reaching out, and we're reaching that populace. And they're filling out applications, but they're not making it to the hiring process. And I don't know why. I would love to have an answer to that. But I get a report every week from HR, and when I do a hiring process, to know what our diverse candidate pool is like, how many we have, who's in the queue, how we can reach out to them, and things of that nature. But I gotta get them from signing the application to sitting in front of me, so I can hire.
And the other part to that, I guess, when you mentioned your community walks and supporting community events. Do you ever, do you use any of your retirees that, especially from the diversity side, when I think about the inner-city communities? I can recall those that worked when I was working, who retired, and now they're just retirees. Do they ever come out to support your efforts in trying to recruit?
I can't say that they have in the past. We've hired some retirees back. They're actually working for us.
Yeah.
But from a recruitment perspective, I can't, that's not a bad idea, I haven't...
Yeah, I've always thought, thought about the ones that I know who has retired, and I always wondered, had they ever been reached out to to say, come help us? To encourage others to consider it?
And I know that they have people interested. I get phone calls all the time, hey, this is a good person, you need to hire them. And we've had, we've hired some people, we've hired grandsons of some of our retirees.
Right, yeah.
And so, you know, they are engaged in that perspective, but no, we haven't had them out.
'Cause I've talked to a couple of them on occasion and asked that question, and they have always seemed to be interested. But I don't know if they are willing to make that initial step, waiting to hear for someone to call them up and say, can you help us out?
Yes, ma'am.
Go to a school, or go to a function, an event, and speak on our behalf.
Not a bad idea.
To do that. And the other one I have is, we have the fire stations in the community, do any of them interact with the kids in the communities? I was thinking, you know, Melrose, or even over on Memorial, if they came out and...
Yeah, they do, all the time. And if you look at our Facebook page, you'll see them, they're in constant interaction with the kids, things that are going on in the community. Invite them into the firehouse, you know, it's constant, constant traffic flow, which is a great thing.
Yeah. So they establish a relationships where the kids, if they feel need to talk with someone in public safety, they're comfortable to go there?
The stations are not closed.
Okay. And with regards to the Fire Marshals, they are at the administrative building, are they located also?
They're located on third floor of Fire Station One.
So all of them at Fire Station One?
But they shouldn't be there very long, 'cause they need to be out in the field.
That's what I was...
And each one of the Fire Marshals are broken up into four, we have five lieutenants, and they have, each got northeast, southeast, southwest, and northeast. And then we have one for the downtown. And then I have three captains that oversee different operations, whether it's inspections, or code enforcement initiatives, or it's fire prevention and fire investigation. So they're kinda broken down that way, and then we don't have a Fire Marshal as of yet. We hope to make that announcement within the next thirty to forty-five days. But right now, like I said, Captain Russell's acting.
Oh, okay. And the other one I have is, and this is my last one, with the homeless, when you get calls with regards to the homeless. Most of your calls with them, is that substance abuse, drug abuse calls, or is it mental illness? And if so, do you have someone who goes out to count, with the paramedics that have that expertise in mental health?
No, ma'am. It's all the above, and unfortunately, with the amount of demand we have, we don't. You know, that's part of what, you know, a community paramedic, paramedicine program could help, to help do that. We do work with a HAT team if we have some issues that are out there that we need to bring to their attention. And if we have that situation, we'll bring it to their attention. But, you know, we just, because we're going from call to call, we don't have that constant interaction to be able to take a person and take it from point A to point B.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if you got a call in a situation where they didn't need, it was non-emergency, under that program you were just talking about?
Right, Alpha program.
Yes.
No, we'll transport them if it's a weather-related issue, it's too hot or too cold, we'll transport them to cooling shelters, we'll get them into the rescue mission, or wherever it needs to be, 'cause we don't want them to be, you know, further their issue. But a lot of times, with the people down that we get, most of them just need to be woken up and tell them to move on.
Yeah. And with regards to your elderly, the ones that get the dispatchers and have calls that, you know, are falling, can't get up, kinda thing, and just want you to come out. I think you said, are those calls still on the high end, or?
About nine hundred to a thousand calls a year.
Yeah.
And our engine companies run those. Our ambulance system. Engine companies have less volume, so we send the engine companies out, they have EMTs and paramedics on the engine company. They'll go out, they'll evaluate the patient, and put them back in bed, put them in their chair. And a lot, if they need medical care to get to hospital, they'll call ambulance, come and transport. But it's only like ten percent of the time that the ambulance needs to come. So the engine company, ladder company, go out, lift them up, and put them back where they need to be. And they also would do a home assessment. If there's a problem with the home, then we'll get some people involved. We've had some bad situations where people are not living in good environments.
Yeah.
And with that's the case, we work with social services in Martin's area, and we'll get them involved and try to get the help that they need.
And I guess some of them may have just be, they're just lonely, and some, do you get a lot of repeats where they're just trying to get someone to come see them?
In some cases, but not usually. It's people who will find changes in their mobility, and the changes in quality of life, and they don't know what to do. And a lot of time, it's just a matter of education, to say, this is the services they're provided, this is what we can help you with. You know, there are people that, you know, need to go to the doctor's office, and they have nobody else to help them, so we'll go, pick them up, put them in the car. They'll call us, and they'll come, pick them up, take them back, and put them in bed. So, I mean, they had nobody else to call, and that sometimes falls on us, and we're very happy to do that.
Well, I like that. I like what you, the community service piece, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. And Chief, I know you've had a lot of questions here, and that's what, I know how the mayor feels now, I really do. So just briefly, just to follow up on a couple of things that Ms. Moon Reynolds said, that was one of my questions about the Alpha calls. You know, like the senior that has fallen and just needs some help, because I know my agency, we have a lot of those. And we feel bad having to call to have someone help them get the person up, because they may not be a hundred and fifty pounds, they may be two seventy-five or four hundred pounds. So they don't have any choice, but you do have a way now that you don't have to deploy, like your heavy machine, your big guns?
We'll send the engine company out, and they'll go non-emergency, and it's a low priority for us, so we'll get there in about ten or fifteen minutes and put them back in bed. If it's something that's more critical, they'll go out there, but a lot of times, they're there in five minutes.
Right, right.
Because they're out the door, and they're there.
Right, yeah.
But if they, depending on what they have going on, if they're, and an emergency call comes in, they'll be off and run that, and they'll come back and take care of this.
Yeah.
You know, definitely, the person doesn't have any complaints, that is fallen, needs to be picked up. Those are the types of dispatchers are really good about, typing those calls, and call a lift assist. And our engine companies, ladder trucks, and sometimes our medic units will go, if the first unit engine is out of service for that area, and the ambulance is in service, the ambulance will go.
The ambulance will go.
We're not pulling an engine from downtown to go to Dolly Road, do a lift assist, any medic four would go and take care of it.
So an ambulance, just an ambulance couldn't go, because it seems like it would be cheaper with gas, you know?
It is, but it's volume.
Oh, okay.
The amount of calls that our ambulance is...
And it's gonna increase, too, with seniors.
Yeah, the amount of calls that the ambulances are running, keep them in service for us to have response capacity, we defer that to the engines. It is a little cheaper, but then if I put an ambulance out here and a lift assist, you know, last year, we called the county in Salem and bought it, and Roanoke County in four hundred and five times into the city, 'cause we didn't have units to respond.
Right.
Now, we went out to the county in Salem, three hundred and some, it's on your list, we went up eighty-three percent, I think it was three hundred and five calls, but we did go out. So, you know, when you have that kind of volume, you know, the best thing you do is manage it methodically. And what, again, through committee, hey, let's have the engine companies do that. They're out of service fifteen minutes, they come back, and they're not running the fifteen calls that the ambulances are running.
Well, Chief, you and your team, you have to save lives, okay, Ms. Price, I'll get to you. You gotta save lives, put out fires, you know, pull folks out of flood zones, you know. You have to do a lot with the staff that you have. And so, and I know Ms. Price has another question, and we normally defer to all of the council before they come back to me, but since I'm started, I'll just go ahead and finish. I just wanted to say that I wanna know, I know you have a list of department needs, I know you have your business plans. I know that what we do is empower our city manager to help facilitate whatever it is that you need. But I'm asking you, as a member of council, is there anything that we can do to help facilitate these needs and to get you the things that you need on your 2022 business plan, or that's already in play?
Well, not all is in play, and it really has to be, you know, some of it has to be programmed in CIP. Some of it has to be funded this year. We met with our finance guy, and some of the stuff was not, but they showed me that it will. Some of it has to be, you know, put together in stages. So, you know, when you buy a fire truck or a ladder truck, it's 1.5 to 1.8 million dollars. And we got to make sure, first of all, we have the financial stability to do that and make that happen. So, you know, I know there's talks in play now to make that work. So it just really depends on, you know, I'm only one department. There are many other needs within the city of Runet. There are. And I've got to share those needs to make sure that I'm not the only one that's asking. But I am the one that's asking for our staff, our citizens and what we do. So if you look at our business plan, it's on the website. If you want a personal copy, I'll print one and give it to you. But it goes through and that actually outlines the years it needs to be done. So yes, you know, that, that plan is in place. It's adopted by city manager, deputy city manager Greer. He concurs with what's in it. And there's just things we've got to get accomplished. But again, that's something we'll look at every year because this year could be different than 2024. We just don't know what the future is going to bring as it relates to man for services, changes in the industry and what's happening.
Well, I, I know that, I'm not speaking just for myself. I'm sure my colleagues will concur that we, we surely have to do whatever we need to do to, to make sure that we can help facilitate that. Because you, I mean, we're looking at all the departments as well. Right now, we're talking about the fire and EMS. I want to make sure.
I understand respectful by, by counter directors, to be honest with you.
Well, I appreciate that.
Sam Roman's got, you know, he's got needs. We all have needs. But we also want to make sure that the needs are prioritized and that y'all follow your mission of what needs to be done and what the order is. And that's, that's, that's the direction I want you to follow.
Well, thank you. I commend you all. And I know Ms. Price is, she's.
This is real quick. It's not a question, but I would be remiss if I didn't publicly thank you. Ms. Moon Reynolds brought up about youth engagement. And so I just wanted to say thank you. I know just last month in June, your depart, the fire department was able to come out to a career day at Hurt Park. And that has been going on now for at least three or four years that I've been involved. And I know that's replicated at other schools around the city. So I just wanted to point that out. And then thank you also that we had big trucks and, and, and kids were trying on equipment and getting their, their interest peaked in looking at this as a profession. But you, they also came out to our youth summit out in Washington Park last month. So I just thought, just, just those two things of, in the, in addition to the long list of everything else you guys are doing, let's not forget your, your youth engagement. So thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. I'm not even going to take any more questions. We're cutting it off. We're done. They're done. Ah, you're done. We're gonna let the chief.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great day.
You too.
Vice Mayor and Council, our second briefing is on smart scale applications. As you all may recall, kind of annually, we'll submit a package of requests for funding through the state. As we have said in numerous occasions, unlike other jurisdictions, we have to ask for funding from the state. And certainly we do that each year. This year's no different. August 1st actually is when those applications are due. There is one project or one application for funding that is in that list that we felt it important to elevate out of the rest of the list to do so in a briefing for today. And that is the Williamson Road Safety Improvement Project. And it, the one thing I'll stress before the presentation begins is this is a partnership, obviously, between VDOT, the city, as well as others in the area. And what this is, is a request for, or ultimately will be a request for funding. If we're successful in the funding, then the design process begins after that, which will include further public discussions and so on. So this is really just to elevate this. One, we will be back unless there is direction otherwise. We will be back on August 1st at your meeting. We're actually going to have this item for action in the morning because when I say it's due August 1st, it's due 5:00 PM August 1st. So we've got to give time for Susie and her staff to actually certify everything we need so that they can make the applications for the smart scale projects. But they're going to walk you through this one project out of the list, give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. There are also similar presentations going on out in the community. So VDOT certainly has had a survey. There have been meetings with the Williamson Road Area Business Association. There are meetings with individual business owners going on. There's a meeting with the neighborhood coming up. So we're trying to get as many opportunities to share what the proposal is, why, and also hear from residents and business owners regarding that. So that's what this item is.
I was going to say, is that the reason why we're in 11th hour, you had to do all that engagement and all those meetings? Because we can't have any missteps now because we've got, everything's got to go.
It's, the, the process is a little strange because in order for us to get into the pipeline to actually get design underway, we have to have a certain amount of what I'm going to call conceptual design already accomplished in order to make the application. So, you know, we, we often don't even do this level of engagement at this point. We usually wait until we secure funding. Then we go through that. In this case, because of the, the project and the history of the project. I think staff and VDOT felt it was important to get some of that out there in the, in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, Duane, you're gonna, you're gonna start us and then we'll go.
I am going to start. Okay. Madam Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I appreciate your time today. I have with me several folks here. Michael Gray with VDOT is actually going to talk about the OIP study and he'll explain what that is and the smart scale process. You may remember we were here about a month ago and we talked about the William, the Orange Avenue Improvement Projects. Also have with me Hong Liu, our City Traffic Engineer, and I, Coffee. So the four of us will try to answer any questions as we can do our best at. So I'll invite Michael to come up first.
Thank you. Thanks for having me this afternoon. Just want to give you a very, kind of a little quick briefing of how we got to where we are and how the city's, you know, doing all the, the legwork on, on looking at Williamson Road. From the state's perspective, you know, we have nine districts around the state, our district, Salem District. We have 12 counties and five cities and multiple towns that we're trying to help through this process for that August 1st deadline of submitting applications. We're working with about 59 projects around our district in particular to try to help to get them ready for that August deadline. But within all of that, we did, we initiated five studies, which he, he talked about the OIP studies, the Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment out of the Secretary's Office. That has to do with our, kind of the state long-range plan for transportation. It's called V-Trans. And that's been put together several years ago and it's kind of an ongoing effort that looks at needs around the state. It used to be where all the state work was kind of more of at the policy level, kind of a high-level look at what's going on around the state. But several years ago, probably five or more years ago, five to seven years ago, we started looking at kind of qualitative or quantitative needs around the state. What are, what are issues around the state dealing with safety and, and traffic, you know, travel patterns and, and travel times along a corridor, looking at transit issues as well, looking at biking safety, things like that. And we've developed this kind of robust mapping, you know, effort to, to take those needs and, and show them all over the state. And within our district, we kind of looked at what are the priorities within those needs? So we were able to identify kind of five locations around our district that kind of lit up. You know, if you look at the needs, we have multiple needs along the Williamson Road corridor. We had, you know, multiple needs up in Salem, an area we were looking at, over in Runet County, up in Christiansburg, and over in Bottot County. So that's kind of the five that we initiated within our district. But before we did that, we talked to, you know, each of the locality staff to see if they're interested in, in doing that type of effort. So with that, we initiated the OIP study that is on the Williamson Road corridor. And, you know, we're here, we hired a consultant to help with that. So we've been working with the city staff and our consultant along that way. And, you know, as you know, we've done a little bit of public outreach and actually, I'd say your staff and, and the city folks have done a whole lot more outreach than, than we've done with our one survey. But I just want to give you a, a little bit of a background, what that process is at the state level. And you need to address a need through that process before you can actually apply for smart scale, which is the applications that are due August 1st. So with that, I'll, you know, answer any questions you have. If not, I'll turn it over to Duane. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. So is the city manager referenced there with this is the smart scale application? We talked about Orange Avenue just a couple of weeks ago. Why is this not working? I just want to use this. Okay. So that. All right. So we'll go with this. Williamson Road, what problem are we trying to solve? As Michael referenced, the question that VDOT always asks is, since they have 59 applications, what problem are we trying to solve and how we, how can we do that in a way that, from a cost-benefit ratio standpoint, will score high enough to actually get approved? So that's the consent, that's what we're trying to come up with here between VDOT and VDOT's consultant and city staff. So on Williamson Road, you look at the daily traffic volume, 15,000 to 17,000 vehicles per day. Remember that number because I'll talk about another corridor, which is very similar in just a few minutes. The average traffic speed there is not critically important. But this one number here, the 100 crashes per year. So if you multiply that over the five-year period between 2017 and 2021, that's 500 vehicle crashes per, in the five-year period. The first question we always get asked is, how does that number compare? Again, remember that 500 number. I'll come back to it in just a little bit. Pedestrian crashes, 12 within that five-year period, five of which were fatalities, two serious, severe injuries and five visible injuries. Again, how does that compare? We'll talk about that in just a little bit. But those five fatal injuries are part of why this raises to the level of the VDOT saying, hey, we need to do something with this corridor in particular. Let me take you back to 2003. I was early in my career here with the city. But we, in transportation, did a median and center turn lane project. Why did we do that? Because we had a lot of rearing collisions and crashes between Angel Avenue and Herschberger Road. We took what was a five-lane section and we added a center turn lane. And the results of that are pretty impressive. So between January 2020 and, and July 2021, you had 74 total crashes, 53 rear ends. If you look at 15 months after the project was constructed, there was a 58% reduction in total crashes and a 77% reduction in rear end crashes. That's pretty impressive. Now let's look at that as it compares last year, 2020 to 2021. And we even further reduced the 6% total reduction in total crashes. So we're well over 60%. And then 25% further reduction in rear end crashes. So center turn lanes work. And that's part of why you will see what we have in terms of a proposal. Now, those pedestrian crashes, the 12 we talked about, the 2003 project did zero to address the pedestrian crashes. So we'll talk about this, that in just a minute too. Let's talk about Brandon Avenue. So that's a recent project we did back in 2001, so last fall. We don't yet have a year's worth of data to compare. But if you look at the AV, average daily traffic, 15,000 to 21,000, so a little bit higher in terms of total traffic in some sections. So let's see how that compares. The average crashes per year is 60 versus 100. So over the five-year time period, you were looking at 300 versus 500. That's a significant difference. In terms of pedestrian crashes, instead of 12, we're looking at three. Now, we did have the one fatality, which is part of the reason that we did what we did on Brandon. So what we did was, as part of a repaving project, and I'm sure you were familiar with this, between Brambleton and Colonial, we took one of the travel lanes and we turned it into a center turn lane. That helps to reduce the crash volume, but it also provides bike accommodations on either side. Now what that also does is, if you're a pedestrian and you don't cross at the corner, which we're all supposed to cross at the corner, right? That's where you're supposed to cross. But if you don't, you walk into the bike lane first, then one travel lane, then the center turn lane provides a little refuge, go to the next travel lane. So you've got some refuge in there. So that's what we did to address the pedestrian concerns. And what we know is that we've reduced travel time through the corridor about four miles per hour. But we also reduced the travel time, the peak PM, peak travel time by three minutes. And you go, wait a minute. If you reduce speed, how did you reduce travel time through the corridor? And that's simply through coordination of the traffic signals. And we found this to be very effective. I think anybody who has ridden a bike on Brandon since then goes, yes, it's significantly more comfortable, especially with the buffered bike lanes than it was previously. And traffic flow is immensely better today than it was before, even though you have theoretically one fewer travel lane in each direction. Now let's go back to Williamson Road. The goals of the project, reduce vehicle crashes, reduce pedestrian crashes. And we're looking at in this particular one, 95% of the corridor likely will receive new sidewalks as part of this project. 40 new crosswalks as part of this project. Now, we are very early in the design phase. We're simply doing enough design to get a cost estimate. But as of right now, that's what we're looking at. And of course, in terms of vehicle crashes, that center turn lane that we know works on Williamson is what we're proposing on the lower half of Williamson. And then, of course, we have to maintain vehicle access to businesses and neighborhoods and maintain vehicle travel time through the corridor. And increasing access to businesses by other modes of travel, pedestrians and bicycles in particular. All right. So when we were here last time, we looked at a video. You may recall this. And what we're going to do is we're going to look at, we're going to pick up where this project left off on Orange and we're going to go north now. So let me get out of this, this presentation here and I'm going to go over to. I'm going to go full screen. All right, let me pause right here. Okay, so, so everybody has their bearings now. Sheetz is back to the left over on this side here. This is the Civic Mall here where Social Services is. And we're going to pick up, the other project goes to here, the Williamson, excuse me, the Orange Avenue project. And we're going to pick up here and let it run for just a minute and kind of see what we're taking a look at. So you're transitioning there from two lanes down to a single lane. You'll have a dedicated turn lane into the Civic Mall. And this is where it turns back into two lanes here. Now past Compton, this is where you kind of get into the heart of the project, where you have the center turn lane in both directions. You've got one travel lane in both directions. And you've got the bike lanes with a one-foot buffer between the travel lane and the bike lane. Now, all the orange that you see on here is new sidewalk, new entrances. Now let's talk just a second about the signals. Currently, there are nine signals on Orange, or excuse me, on Williamson between Compton and Wentworth, nine. As part of this project, we're looking to remove four of them. We are going to add one back because it warrants. But if you think about that, that's a net of three. We're removing 30% of the traffic signals on Williamson, 30%. Because that is a big complaint by everybody that's out there. But this shows you the new crosswalks here. And you kind of get a sense of how much sidewalk we're talking about and how many entrances we're talking about. And here at Wayne Street, all the new crosswalks. Now, let me be clear. The project doesn't stop right here. It's simply, RV TV had to cut the graphic at one point. We're going to skip up to Liberty Road instead of going all the way through the project. But to be clear, this continues all the way through. Okay, picking up again here. All right. Liberty Road is up here. You see very similar in that you've got a single travel lane in both directions, bike lanes, sidewalks and lots of entrances. I know there has been some concern about a potential roundabout at Liberty Road. This project does not include that. The other thing I want to be sure that you understand is, the project in 2003 on Williamson included raised medians landscaping that prevented some turns left or right. That's not included either. These, this is simply marked pavement. Thanks again to our folks there at RV TV. They've just done a genius job and to be able to illustrate this. And we're going to shift on down to the end of the project so you can see where it. And we're going to shift on down to the end of the project so you can see where it comes back. Okay, so Angel is right here. That was the end of the project in 2003 that came south. So this is the end of the project, and you can see where it transitions back from a single lane to two lanes. So again, you've got sidewalks, entrances, and this one median will be extended, but that's only, that's the only piece where we'll have additional median area through the project. Okay. Let me go back over here now. That's what we just looked at. Safety benefits of the project, safety operational benefits, pedestrian benefits. I won't go through all these, it's in your packet if you have questions. And then, just want to reiterate that Federal Highway Administration, VDOT, has done lots of research on these types of safety improvement projects, and you note there's statistically significant reduction in crashes, which is exactly what we saw on Williamson Road between, with the 2003 project. And then, a combined VDOT result, 45 sites, estimated 29% reduction in total crashes. That was across 45 different projects, very similar to Williamson Road. And then, at the bottom there, more significant speed reduction was apparent on projects with higher traffic volumes like Brandon and like Williamson Road. So again, just to reiterate what we're trying to do with the project, reduce vehicle crashes, reduce pedestrian crashes in particular, maintain vehicle access to businesses and neighborhoods, maintain vehicle travel time through the corridor, and add accommodations for pedestrians and bicycles. So with that, what questions may we answer?
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
My concern is about the buses.
Yes.
Just go down the road.
I understand.
So, we're going to get stuck behind a bus? There's no safety, there's not a safety protocol for people that getting on and off the buses when you have all the vehicles behind them?
Right. So in terms of transit and buses, you have the bicycle lane that they will pull into, you've got the one-foot buffer between the bike lane and the travel lane, and then folks that are pulling around them will merge into the center turn lane and go around them. I mean, it, honestly, it's no different than a lot of other corridors where you don't have pull-offs. I mean, what do people do now on Williamson Road? They pull around the bus, right?
Yeah, but you only have one lane.
Correct, but you also have a lot of additional buffer to the left that you use the center turn lane for. And the bus won't be in that one travel lane, right? They're pulling off to the curb, so you've got the bike lane plus the buffer. So the bus will not be stopped in the travel lane. They pull to the curb. Excellent question, though. Thank you for asking.
And also, turning light at Liberty?
Yes.
Will you, would there be a turning lane, or?
There will be a turning lane at Liberty, yes. Yeah, I mean, you'll have the center turn lane that is dedicated to go left onto Liberty if you're going northbound, and you go left.
And with a traffic light to match that turning?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Because right now, there is no traffic, there's no signal for a left turn on Liberty.
There is not a signal at Liberty?
There's no lead light.
No.
There's no lead light.
There's no...
That's what she made. Yes, sorry.
Okay. Some of these details are yet to be worked out. I understand your concern, and we'll make sure we address your concern.
Yep, so we'll be able to...
Okay.
None of that.
Good question. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Love that aerial from RV TV. You said there are nine lights between, what were those two streets?
Between Compton and Angel. That's the project limits of this particular project.
Thank you. And I guess, once the project is finalized, you'll be determining which lights would be eliminated, you said?
So we have a sense of that already based upon the turning movements. So the consultant has already recommended removal of several. I don't remember them off the top of my head, but...
Oh, that's okay. No, 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 you don't have to go into that kind of detail.
Okay, but we have a sense of that already.
Okay.
And then, there is another signal that we will add based again on turning movements.
All right. I just wanted to make sure I had those, the stopping points.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lou Reddell, thank you. With regards, and I'll stay with where Ms. Price just stopped at, when we talked about the nine traffic signalization, because I'm over in the Williamson Road area and I come out, so I'm familiar with exactly which, which points have the traffic signalizations at. There were a couple of them that some in the neighborhood have already expressed concern about.
Okay.
And I know some of them, like they were on Orange Avenue, at 10th Street and 11th Street, they're so close together, so I can understand with the proximity of taking some out. Whereby, one of interest was at Pioneer.
Pioneer.
Right there, I believe that was one in the survey that was looking to be eliminated, as well as the one down at Huntington. So you would have 10th Street, Miss Huntington, and keep straight on up until you got to, I believe would be Preston. So that was a little bit of concern, because I come out of Pioneer often.
You do.
And so, that's where you really have a time trying to cross over.
Okay.
With, with the traffic, but that's neither here nor there. If it's taken out, it's just an adjustment, because you got the backstreets you can kind of use at the same time. You did mention, with regards to taking out, I guess, the medias, what you had in since 2003 when Darlene was here, and we put in those with the trees, so the trees and all would come out.
No, ma'am.
You're going to leave the trees in in the center lanes?
So anything north of Angel that was installed in 2003 will remain.
Okay.
So that's the project limits of, from 2003 was Herschberger south to Angel.
Okay.
So we're going between Compton and Angel.
Oh, okay, okay. You stopping there.
Okay.
Okay. So the one, this goes up to Williamson Road right there after you go past Angel. I can't think of it, Har, I want to say Hawthorne, or...
Wentworth?
No, Wentworth is down. It goes back down.
Okay, you're coming south.
Yeah, I'm coming, I'm going straight up to north.
I understand.
And so I guess, Mike, you've answered that question. I, I guess I'm more concerned about when you, when you, when you put in the two lanes going from four to two with the side being for pedestrians and with the improvements on the sidewalks. I like that. There were, the runoff is where I'm at, is the impervious surfaces that you're going to encounter. What, where is that water going to go now? Because we have drainage issues now on Williamson Road. Would any of that be addressed?
It will not be. And again, it gets back to your cost benefit ratio.
Yeah.
So the only thing we're trying to solve is vehicle crashes and pedestrian crashes.
Just the crashes and that, okay.
If we were going to get in and try to solve all the stormwater issues on Williamson Road, that would at least quadruple the project cost.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be funded. So we've been very careful with the VDOT consultant, that we don't want this to turn into a drainage project.
Right. But I think when you're looking at this with pedestrian safety and the walking even now, when you look at going in to the, to the, to make two lanes and using the outer lanes to make the pedestrian, and are you widening any of the sidewalks? Are you going to use any of that for, to extend the sidewalk dimension, for you to feel safe when you're walking, because you're not as close to traffic, I suppose, you've got that buffer?
There will be a buffer space between the curb and the sidewalk, and all the sidewalk will be ADA compliant once the project is done, which is not the case now. There's a lot of missing sidewalk, as you will know.
Yeah. Because I've noticed that, I was, I was just observing, coming to, coming there to the council meeting, where there used to be, let's say, sidewalk that's now becoming, that became part of a parking lot.
Right.
Will that be taken back?
Yes.
To be into a sidewalk, okay. Because I saw a lot of that, where it used to be grass areas, that's no longer there. It's just paved over and part of someone's business per se.
Right.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you for asking.
Mr. Poppy, have any? Yeah, thank you. I, I will share the concern that my colleague, Vivian, shared about bus pull-ins.
Mm-hmm.
I love the bike lanes.
Mm-hmm.
I think those are important. I did some traveling recently. They're showing up in cities all over, even much larger than, than us, very urban centers. So I think people are getting used to those. But a reminder that, and I guess from a safety standpoint, if you're riding a bike and you're in a bike lane and a bus pulls over, you're going to have to pay attention and stop or go around, but then if you go around, you're going to be entering the flow of traffic. So that's a concern that I'll share, and the buses do need to get over far enough to be able to let people off, not in the middle of the street, but, you know, to the curb. I know this is just addressing really how the, the road is, what's the phrase you used? Not mapped out, but...
The configuration of the road?
Marked.
Okay. The pavement mark.
The pavement markings.
Right.
Has there been a study done, whether or not it's related to this, about a roundabout at Liberty?
We have looked at a roundabout at Liberty, and it did not, the functionality, and this is where I need my traffic engineers to speak a little bit more, but the functionality did not appear to be a significant improvement in traffic flow, which was why we didn't choose to include it in this particular project.
Okay.
Because we did look at that.
Yeah. I think the major concern that I hear, in general, related to this, this kind of moving to a center lane and then single lanes on either side, is that conceptually, people believe, right or wrong, that if you reduce from two lanes on either side to one lane on either side, it's going to create congestion. I think that's the perception.
Sure.
Now, you've shown here, like on Brandon, that that's not necessarily the reality. The, the flow of traffic is, appears to be better. There appears to be a reduction. So there's, there's some getting used to of that. But I think that's from an advocacy and education standpoint, that's a really important thing to address, because it's, it's probably the biggest question that I hear. Right now, we have two lanes, most of Williamson, we have two lanes that we can go down, even if I'm correct where the medians are.
That's correct.
There is a center lane, but there are still two lanes on either side.
That is correct.
Now, that doesn't take into account safe passage for bicycles, so the bicycle lane is currently not there, and it doesn't take into account the sidewalks, which I think are very much needed. But I just raise that as a concern, because that's the primary concern that I hear. So if this is something that we move forward with, I think that there needs to be a clear communication of the benefits of this to overall traffic flow and reduction of traffic accidents with that dedicated center lane, so that the public understands that. Because I think it's, it's hard until you experience the reality of something to move it from perception to reality. So that's just more of an observation to share.
Thanks for that.
The last thing is kind of a sidebar question, but it's come up regarding Colonial, the work, the repaving and marking work there. So the question was, on the bicycle lanes, there's, there's a section on Colonial right in front of Towers, just past, I think it's actually at the, where the Starbucks is going down. The bicycle lane actually bumps out a bit and then goes back in against the curb.
Right.
But in most places, you see the bicycle lane right adjacent to the curb. Can you explain why that bump out is there?
Yeah, and you, you want to speak to that, Lou?
Typically, yes. That's where you're supposed to be straight. So I think there's a little bit layout mistaken in there, and the supposed vehicle going straight between the two lanes, like a typical. But right now, we try and address that. It's supposed to be in the middle, but they got the bike box, so to try to accommodate that.
But to your question about their Starbucks, that's simply where you have the line of cars getting into Starbucks, having the bikes around that line. I mean, you've seen it in the mornings where you've got a queue.
Yeah, but this is after that, and it looks like there's, there's like a couple of feet, and, and when I was looking at it and driving through there, I thought, well, maybe it's because of the entry points into the businesses. But it didn't fully make sense to me why there's like 50 yards of, it's, it's out a couple of feet, and then it goes back in as you get closer to the intersection at Brandon and Colonial.
Let us look at it and we'll...
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, what Lou is referencing is, as you approach the signal, theoretically, the right turn lane, the bicycle lane, in between the right turn lane and the through...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I get that, right. Yeah.
But that, that's not what you were speaking about.
Right, correct.
Further upstream of that.
Correct.
Oh, my mistake.
Well, I think we're almost done. I just have a couple of questions, because I, I do live in that area as well, and the bike lanes, I'm excited about that, because they, you know, they haven't had bike lanes. I mean, you would use part of the sidewalk as a bike lane because it was so wide, and so that's good news. And so that entire stretch is going to have bike lanes?
Yes, ma'am.
We, we just have to educate people on what they are and how they work, because on Herschberger, I thought that they understood that, but they don't. So, you know, I guess that's part of the process, but I think it's a good idea. And the only other thing that I'm going to say is that since we are so early in the planning stages, is to just don't leave out the businesses and the community, you know, like the neighborhood associations. If they could be involved, or just, you know, share with them what you've shared with us, I think it would help them also understand, help educate them, so that, you know, just as a part of the process, that's all I'm going to say. But other than that, I'm excited about it. I think it will work, because I ride and walk that area, and I, I think it will be, and drive. So I think it will be a really good improvement once everybody understands and gets used to the, the traffic flow.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
We, just to your point, we have met with RABBA numerous times. We've presented to their board. They have adopted a resolution of support. We're going to meet with a couple of neighborhood organizations coming up before the end of the month, so we're doing everything we can to get the education outreach.
That would be great. Greater Grandview, which is, my husband is the president there, they're very involved in the Williamson Road, and with all the churches, a lot of the churches come to the meeting. So that would be a good source to start with, and maybe the one that you go to step in.
We, Noble and Arrow Lee is meeting with, with the staff on June, I mean, July the 28th.
Correct.
At 6:30 at St. Thomas of Canterbury. We would be meeting there. I would be attending as, from the neighborhood.
Yeah, that would be good. Just at least those two, because they're probably the largest and most active.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cow?
And the last thing I'm saying is, just as a reminder, again, this is one of applications we're making, but the intent is then at your meeting on August 1st, in the morning, we'll have that action item, and again, which is just a bit unusual to have it in the morning session, but that's again, so we can get all of that taken care of, so that they can then make the application, which is due by 5 o'clock that evening.
Yes, tour clerk, staff.
They're ready. They're ready.
Well, I think council has asked for a little recess here, so we'll take a unit of five minutes, five minutes recess.
Thank you. Since we made a session two hours.
Two hours? Whoa, two hours. Whoa, two hours.
I'll call out Roanoke City July 18 session back in order. And we're going to move on with our agenda. We're items recommended for action. Number one, approval of the 2022 HUD annual plan. And there is one measure, a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second. Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
A resolution approving the city's City of Roanoke's 2022 HUD annual plan to the city's 2020 through 2024 five-year consolidated plan, authorizing the city manager or the city managers designate to submit the 2022 annual plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for final review and approval, and authorizing the execution of all necessary documents pertaining to the 2022 annual plan.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'll ask that you call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Item number two, acceptance of the 2022-2023 Community Development Block Grant Home Investment Partnerships Program, Emergency Solutions Grant, the CDBG-CV and Home American Rescue Plan funds for HUD-funded activities. And there are two measures, a resolution and a budget ordinance.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
Yes. A resolution authorizing acceptance of certain grants from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for entitlement funding for the 2022 through 2023 fiscal year consisting of the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnerships Program grant, and the Emergency Solutions Grant. The CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act funds for such grants to be used in connection with the 2022-2023 HUD annual action plan previously approved by the City Council upon certain terms and conditions, and authorizing the execution of the necessary grant documents required to accept such funds.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Cobb, I just have a quick question. On the, I think it was the ESG grant, that we are allowed to use a portion of, I think it was like 156,000 and then 33,000 from the previous year. Does that sound about right?
I don't remember the dollars.
Yeah, that's what they look.
Yeah, there are dollars that are carried over.
Right.
And in addition to that, we had, remember, also allocations tied with the CARES Act that were mixed in with that as well.
Yeah, I think it was a little more than 156K and then 33K left over. But my question is, since we're having such a huge problem with our homeless population, is that the only funding that we have access to, or can we use some of the other money in?
Yeah, so if you recall when we discussed a couple of months or a month ago.
Yeah, well, maybe that's why I don't recall.
With the, with the ARPA, the next phase of the ARPA funding. So there's $5 million identified out of the ARPA funding, which will be focused on homeless response, which is above this, these dollars.
Well, okay, so that's just, but if it came down to it, could we use any of that money? I guess my question is, can you, can you use it if we need it to? Because there's a large amount, some of the CDBG money.
Some of the CDBG, there are, there are CDBG programs that might be available to be used for homeless services. The ESG is exclusively for.
Right, right.
For that piece, but there's not necessarily prohibition in.
Right, that was my question. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it really depends on the applications that are received each year and what the priorities are. We tend to, we tend to funnel the ESG funding. We're fortunate at this point that we have the CARES Act as well.
And the money coming, right.
The American Rescue Plan Act portions of it. Yeah, once those dollars are exhausted, then, and I think our ESG funding this year went up slightly from, from the congressional.
There is why the ESG is.
Yeah, so I mean, the real key is actually getting more money at the federal level to go into the, into all of these housing programs with them as well, but.
Yeah, and see, there was money carried over from last year, and I'm just wondering, I mean, we, we just got to exhaust all of it now because we really have some, some really bad situations. I'm sure all of council has been dealing with, with some of those issues. But that's the only question that I have. If there are no other questions, I'll ask Ms. McCoy if you could call the roll.
Yes. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's the budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnerships Program, and Emergency Solution Grant, CDBG-CV CARES Act Program, and Home ARP Program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022 through 2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll ask that you call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number three is the appropriation of federal asset forfeiture funds for, for use by the Roanoke City Police Department, and there is one measure, a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Department of Justice Federal Asset Sharing Program and the Department of Treasury Federal Asset Sharing Program for enhancing law enforcement operations, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'd ask that you call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Moving on to item number four, the execution of a revocable license agreement between the City of Roanoke and Downtown Roanoke, Inc. for space at the center in the square garage. There is one measure, and that is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute on behalf of the city a revocable license agreement with Downtown Roanoke, Inc. for the use of office space on the ground floor at the center in the square parking garage located at 11 Campbell Avenue Southeast, Roanoke, Virginia, which would house the block-by-block program and be shared space with Park Roanoke offices, authorizing the city manager or his designate to implement, administer, and enforce such revocable license agreement, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My question is to the city manager. And you may have already previously mentioned with this block-by-block program, what is the block-by-block program?
Sure, and we did talk briefly about this, again, as in our discussion regarding the next phase of the ARPA funding. And you may recall that we're designating a certain portion of the, of the ARPA funding, a 300 and something thousand dollars that will help kind of pilot this. That's being matched by more than that from both DRI as well as the downtown businesses. So the block-by-block is the downtown ambassador program that you might have heard about.
Oh, the ambassador, okay, okay.
So it's, it's the folks that will, block-by-block is the company that actually will come in and partner with DRI and operate out of this facility. It will deploy personnel across downtown that are used for assisting visitors to downtown, cleanup, litter control, those, those kinds of things as well. And it's a, basically envisioned right now as a two-year pilot, with the intention then that they can, that the funding will be sustained by the, the private partners that are involved in it beyond that.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
If there are no other questions, I'll go ahead and ask Ms. McCoy if you could call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Right now, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Cobb, for any comments that he may have.
I'm going to make it real simple, no additional comments beyond the briefings we've already had, so thank you.
What? Nothing? We don't get anything out of you today? Well, then, we'll go to our.
Could we say something?
City attorney, then.
Well, the lawyer can talk for a while if you want.
Well, we're headed to you next. Item B, city attorney. An amendment of the city code to update section 27-37 discharge of an air gun, gravel shooter, pneumatic gun, etc., and section 24-2.1 prohibition of firearms on city property. There are two measures, an ordinance and an ordinance. Two ordinances.
Move the ordinance. Second.
The first.
There are two orders.
The first, the first ordinance, yes. Yes. Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
I'll read the title paragraph. An ordinance amending and reordaining section 21-37 discharge of air gun, gravel shooter, pneumatic gun, etc., to chapter 21 offenses miscellaneous of the code of the City of Roanoke as amended, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Spencer, would you like to add anything or clarify for our?
If you'll recall from our last meeting, these two amendments are to clarify some issues to ensure that the wildlife department feels comfortable coming into our city to provide services where they might have to deploy a pneumatic weapon or a firearm in order to secure a bear, for example, as we had back in 2017 downtown. And it just also clarifies so that our animal wardens who do carry firearm, if needed, are also included in these to protect their interests.
Okay, and then there's a second ordinance. Oh, I'll call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we're moving right along, aren't we? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on that?
Yes, I will. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Aye, and the ordinance passes.
Move the second ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance amending section 24-2.1 prohibition of firearms on city property to chapter 24 public buildings and property generally to exempting wildlife officials from the restrictions imposed thereunder, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number eight, reports of committees. A, a report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs, and a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donna Caldwell, Director of Accounting, oh, Director of Accounting is the spokesperson, but she's not here. But there's one measure, it's a budget ordinance.
Move the revised budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth federal and private grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022 through 2023 school grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Is there any discussion?
I just have, just.
Ms. Price?
Yes, thank you. What is the revision? What's the difference?
The revision was the year was incorrect on the official measure. It was 2021 through 2022, and we revised it to 2022 to 2023.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Best wishes, we'd catch that. We thank you.
Well, we thank you, Ms. Price.
For bringing that up.
And Ms. Moon Reynolds for letting us know it was revised, because I was just going along with it. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboyd?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. B, a report of certain authorities, boards, committees, and commissions in which council serve as liaison or appointees. Are there any reports? Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to give a brief report on the Greater Roanoke Transit Company. We had our meeting today.
Please.
So a couple of updates. We elected our officers for the coming year. We got an update on the Downtown Transit Center. We are nearing the end of Phase One in terms of construction. Phase Two will be underway probably by October of 2022 this fall. And what that will mean is that you will see the temporary trailers come down, and one of the lane of buses will move over to in front of the new completed physical buildings. And they're still working out the second lane, but it will most likely be on Salem Avenue just outside. While they then, where the temporary trailers are now will be the island, the canopy island and the slips. So that will, they will begin construction on those. But that, everything's on schedule, it's looking really good. Transit union negotiations are underway. Right now, they, they've signed an extension agreement, and they will do that on a monthly basis until those negotiations are completed. Ridership is, continues to go up. This is the fourth month in a row that we've seen increases in ridership, which is great. VM Go, the app, is about ready to go live with the second installment, which will include real time for all of the bus routes.
Wonderful.
Right now, it's just the trolley and smart way. They're going to train, finish training all of the operators, all of the staff, all of the administration. When you get on the buses now, you're, you're going to start to see some of the screens where the, the mobile app is linked. If you all would like this, I can ask Bob, maybe we could get Ron Parker and Kevin to come and do a demo of VM Go for us. It's going to be, it's going to be amazing, actually. So that's, that's moving along. The electric buses are 21 months out.
Yeah, well, you know that was on my list.
I know. That's why it was on my list.
I'm like, when are they coming?
21 months out.
21 months out, that's awesome.
The nice thing is, we are going to have the infrastructure in place, where a lot of localities are getting their buses, but they didn't have the infrastructure in place. And there will be charging infrastructure at the building where the, the buses are serviced, and there will be charging infrastructure at the new transit center.
That's awesome.
Metroflex, RFPs will go out late summer, early fall to receive bids on the, the on-demand service, which will pilot, which will add extended hours Monday through Saturday and on Sunday. And Saturday service, we asked about that today. Ridership has not declined, even though the, some of the routes have been adjusted because of the, the continued issues regarding labor shortfall. We're down about 21 drivers right now, 20 to 25, and continuing to work to, to bring more drivers onboard. So that's just a quick update.
That's a good report. Yeah, good report. I mean, especially with the progress continuing to move on with the shortage of supplies and.
Yeah, they're continuing to provide extraordinary service.
That's amazing. Thank you. Any other? Okay, thank you, Mr. Cobb. Number nine, moving on to unfinished business, we have none. Item 10, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions, there are none. Item number 11, motions and miscellaneous business. A, inquiries and/or comments by myself or my colleagues. Do you all have any? None?
Well, I'm going to take a second just to pat us on the back, well, actually, Ms. O'Brien. Just so, so I'm going to share with them that Staunton wanted to find out more about our Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board. When we thought that, you know, we were just chugging along and we were just struggling, turns out that they have been paying attention and wanted to know more and how to set up. And so Ms. O'Brien actually took the trip this weekend to go visit with them in person. And you're welcome to share if you'd like, or, I know you're all masked up and everything, but, but I thought that was amazing. Just come share a little bit, because I'm really proud of that, because it does feel like we're just kind of struggling. But we have, while you're getting ready, we have five subcommittees. Trust, Breaking the Cycle of Poverty, Service Delivery, Neighborhood Choice, and Inclusive Culture. And what we've done is broken down our, our committees into subgroups so that we can really start digging and, and getting into the weeds and getting some work done. And we, you know, we were all, you know, kind of like, well, you know, we're just chugging along. But then when she told me that last week in our, in our executive board meeting, I was really pleased, because when, you know, you just don't think people are paying attention, but they really are.
Right. Yeah, so great, and thank you for bringing that up. It was the interim city manager, city manager there reached out to me, and the, the chair of their new Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission reached out and asked if I would come down and talk to them at a working session with their, their DEI commission. And it was great. They've been following, you know, they wanted to kind of copy our bylaws. And they're looking, of course, I tried to explain to them the 2040 plan and, and the comp plan that they're looking at and trying to find some similar work that, that we've done here in the city that they can advance on there, and Stanton as well. There's obviously some similarities, but most of our work is, is due to the City of Roanoke, not necessarily Stanton. But they were really excited, and they're working on developing some trust, subcommittees, and they really like the name of the way ours are broken out with the, the priorities and things like that. So I wouldn't be surprised if they don't model a lot of their work after what we've done here in the city. But they've been really pleased with what we've done and are following us very closely, so.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that. I just wanted you guys to know, we are making progress, and you will see even more progress now that we're in the subgroups. Thank you for sharing that. Vacancies on certain boards, commission, and committees appointed by council, there are none. And I think item 12 is to recess, unless there's something else that needs to be addressed. Tim?
Just remember, we do have the.
We have one item, yes.
One item, closed session.
All right, so we will recess and go into closed session.